Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular council meeting of the Sammamish City Council for Tuesday, January 21st. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And could we please have roll call?
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
He will be an hour late.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And could I please ask Councilmember O'Farrell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And Councilmember Gupta, if you could do the landen modugment for me.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snokeamiin Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. And now let's move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded. Everyone in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So let's move now to public comment. We're just zipping right along. You gotta run, Krista. We will start with public comment in the room. If Barbara Rabe is in the room.
Good evening. I suppose you want my address.
Just tell me that you, you know, live in Sammamish.
Okay, yes. I live at 21421 Northeast Sixth Place. And I'm here to talk about your tree retention policy. I love trees. I love the wildlife that find food and refuge in them. I love the shade they provide, that they capture carbon, and the smell, aesthetics, and privacy they provide. But we must, however, tweak our tree retention policy if we are to maintain healthy forests on individual homeowners' property. My street, Northeast Sixth Place, suffered extensive tree loss along with house and property losses during the recent bomb cyclone. It was dumb luck that no one was killed or seriously injured. I personally lost 20 significant trees. Sammamish needs differentiate between developers and individual homeowners. The current policy calls for each dead tree removed from a sensitive area to be replaced by two to three eight-foot native trees. Live trees, even if diseased or dangerous, must be diagnosed by a certified arborist. The Western red cedars in Western Washington are all dying because of drought and hotter temperatures. The Douglas firs are suffering from root rot as demonstrated by the uprooting as they fell. My dead cedars are still standing. It was my firs that uprooted and fell. And I've lived on this property since 1978 and have never seen uprooting before. For our safety, for the health of our forests, for economic feasibility, our forests need periodic thinning. We cannot replace every dead cedar with two to three eight-foot native trees. We cannot afford a certified arborist to prove a leaning or diseased tree is dangerous. We need to experiment with new tree species that will adjust to less rainfall and more sun and heat. The city of Bellevue is giving away 700 trees to residents to increase the city's tree canopy. Since 2021, the city has given away 3,200 trees. Following in the copy of my letter that was sent to you today, I have pictures of my property, and I appreciate it if you would look at those. Also, better yet, come see for yourself. Our street, Northeast Sixth Place, between 213th and 216th, you can still see tarps on the houses, you can see logs piled up out in the road against the, in the parking. It's not quite as bad as it was the first few weeks after it happened, but it's still pretty, you can see that it really impacted my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Lisa Gilbert in the room.
Like my neighbor Barbara Robbie you just heard from, I'm here tonight to speak about the root rot that is afflicting the Douglas firs in our neighborhood and to request some changes to the city's tree removal permit process. My family has lived for 33 years on a one-and-a-half-acre wooded lot on Northeast Sixth Place. It backs up to George Davis Creek. Since we moved here in 1991, we've lost about 20 large Douglas firs toppled during windstorms. We learned that Douglas firs are afflicted by laminated root rot, a fungal disease that spreads in the soil and causes the roots and butt of the trees to turn spongy. I'll pass this spongy root around in a few minutes. It's very interesting. WSU Research, which I have sent you guys a copy of, has documented that, quote, "Damaged trees are often wind thrown due to loss of anchoring roots before above-ground symptoms are obvious," particularly west of the Cascades, making this disease both difficult to diagnose and potentially hazardous. The laminated root rot on our property is spreading as the trees grow and age. One of our worst losses was seven trees in the December 2006 Hanukkah Eve windstorm. And in January 2021, a tree over 100 foot tall hit our house in between the bedrooms where my son and daughter were asleep and caused over $15,000 of property damage. Our insurance company told us they would not insure any additional damage from tree falls for three years. After that incident, we feared for our lives and applied for a permit from the city to remove some additional hazardous trees near the house, but the city would not grant the permit without a certified arborist report, which would cost us over $5,000, even though the rot cannot be identified visually. We prepared a detailed report documenting the extensive historical evidence of the root rot, which I have sent you, and arborist was finally hired to acknowledge that it was impossible to visually observe the rot, and the city finally granted our permit. We then removed 14 trees within striking distance of our house. And as a result, none of the three large Douglas firs we lost in just the November 2024 bomb cyclone hit our house, unlike many others on our street, as Barbara mentioned. We would like to request that the city create some kind of exemption from the certified arborist requirement for permitting removal of hazardous trees that could damage life and property for areas like ours where hazardous trees due to laminated root rot are present. Removal of these unhealthy trees will reduce the spread of the root rot and promote a healthier forest canopy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Victor, are your comments for now or for the, okay, great.
Good evening. Mary Victor, Sammamish for 24 years. So my comments are towards, you have a workshop on the shoreline, and I had written in, it was kind of a long email, but a lot of it was cut and paste from the materials that were actually in the city's packet. When I had started in 2015, I had learned that there was shoreline, and then they were doing erosion hazards near the shorelines. And then I thought, boy, those really sound like the landslide hazard areas. And it took me a long time to understand there's critical areas and there's shoreline. And shoreline is required to do, it's in Title 25, and there's critical areas which you just adopted ordinance for. And when the critical areas become to the shoreline, it's kind of like, what happens there? So there was a missing link or an error link today that went to iCompass, and I sent you that because staff was nicely able to correct it during the day. And so there was an ordinance in 2003 and then 2010 that actually said, okay, shoreline stuff needs to prevail because the people there and everything going on there, they have, a lot of the houses have been there a long time, and anybody that does anything, the state needs to do the whole thing because we're on Lake Sammamish, Redmond is on Lake Sammamish, Bellevue's on Lake Sammamish, Izakua's on Lake Sammamish. So kind of the rule is, is when it gets to the shoreline, it's not really critical areas, it's really shoreline, and then it's no net lost where it's best available science for critical areas. So it took me one heck of a long time to understand that, and I can see puzzled looks at me right now. But I think this is going to come up again, I believe, in March. So if you could read through my email sometime between now and then, I think it'll help straighten things out. But what I just wanted to say is that the shoreline stuff is very important, so is the critical areas. And the one thing I learned is I'd actually sat through all three days of the public hearings on the East Lake Sammamish Trail back a few years ago with the hearing examiner. And I heard people over and over and over come up to the stand and say, avoid, minimize, mitigate, mitigate onsite first, mitigate offsite, and then you've even talked about trees about maybe, or for storm, or excuse me, for wetland areas mitigating maybe even out of the city. But that's the sequencing because there's a lot of areas, we have a lot of critical areas in the city, you're really not supposed to be building in them. And if you are, you're supposed to avoid building if there's a way to, which is why I offered transfer of development rights in 2019 as a docket, which I believe will come up on your work plan this year, I hope. I've heard that it will be. So if you can avoid, that's good. And then if you can minimize, like your REEs are now limited, you can't have a reasonable use exception for a giant home. It can only be like the smallest, and there's actually a number limit in the code. And then you have to mitigate, so whatever you do, you have to minimize it. So anyway, it's a long-winded thing to talk about my email that I'd like you to read, which is really your stuff, I'm just representing it to you. It did take me a long time to learn it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the room for somebody that didn't get a chance to sign up? If not, we'll go to online.
We have one pre-registered commenter who has raised his hand. I will promote him to speak. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Happy Tuesday evening to see all of you. Nice to see all the smiling faces. Good comments today in the room also. Enjoyed those. Before I share my comment, I'd like to tell you a question I've asked probably over 100 people the past six months in Sammamish. And that question is, do you believe Sammamish has enough market rate housing from $500,000 to about 1.4 million to sustainably meet internal housing needs for cycle of life and for future generations? I get a resounding no to that. And then I ask, what do you think the city should add some housing in those price ranges for people that want to stay? And I get a resounding yes. This comment tonight is in regards to how to make that yes happen, in my opinion. So the comment tonight is rooted in my civic record, and I implore City of Sammamish to legislatively set genuine internal citywide shortage market rate housing target numbers based on quantified need factors. Then add those numbers set to the 2025 to 2044 comp plan as quickly as possible. Utilize the citywide shortage market rate housing numbers legislatively set by council to inform and evaluate optimal housing unit alternatives for our town center plan amendment process. Why? Why incorporate citywide housing needs and set targets? So our city can begin to attain local market rate housing supplies authentic to both cycle of life and future generation housing needs within the community alongside our affordable housing target and alongside adding holistic, sustainable enrichments for both residents and the city. I posit that this is priority one for Sammamish at this time, and it's 25 years overdue for doing needs analysis and setting shortage housing targets in the comp plan. So I suggest to take action. Set citywide market rate target numbers ASAP, work them into the comp plan, town center plan, and the rest of the city. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Paul.
That concludes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Council, looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved. Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. So the consent calendar is approved. And we move now to presentations and proclamations. So our first one is on Holocaust, and the second will be on Black History Month. I did not preassign these. Who is interested in Black History Month? There we go. And if I could have another volunteer for the Holocaust Remembrance Day. Apologies. Holocaust Remembrance Day, January 27, 2025. Whereas this Holocaust Remembrance Day marks the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, Birkenau, and the 30th anniversary of the genocide in Bosnia, reminding us of the horrific consequences of hatred, discrimination, and prejudice. And whereas 80 years after the liberation of Auschwitz, antisemitism and other forms of intolerance continue to rise globally, fueling hostility and suspicion in many communities and challenging us to act for a better future by confronting hate in all of its forms. And whereas the Holocaust, which led to the systemic murder of 6 million Jewish people, is a stark reminder of the dangers of dehumanization, propaganda, and division. And we must learn from these past atrocities to recognize and prevent the signs of hatred before they escalate. Whereas to create a better future, we must speak out against Holocaust denial and distortion, support education on the Holocaust, and commit to fostering understanding and respect for all communities. And whereas on Holocaust Remembrance Day 2025, we honor the memory of those lost and pledge to take action for a better future by challenging prejudice, ensuring the lessons of history are not forgotten, and working toward a world free of hatred and violence. Now, therefore, Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the Sammamish City Council, does hereby proclaim January 27, 2025, as Holocaust Remembrance Day 2025, to honor those lost in the Holocaust, reflect on the lessons of history, and commit ourselves to actions that contribute to a future free from hatred, prejudice, and persecution. Thank you. Timely.
Sammamish, Washington, proclamation in honor of Black History Month 2025. Whereas Black History Month is a time to honor the rich and diverse contributions of African-Americans throughout the history of the United States, acknowledging their achievements in ongoing pursuit of justice and equality. And whereas the theme of Black History Month 2025, African-Americans and Labor, recognizes the profound role African-Americans have played in shaping this nation's labor force and economic foundation. And whereas African-Americans have labored under some of the most challenging circumstances, including involuntary servitude and systemic discrimination, yet have made significant and lasting contributions across all sectors of labor, from agriculture to business ownership and professional industries. And whereas the legacy of African-American labor includes pivotal roles in the abolition of slavery, the civil rights movement, and the fight for workers' rights, highlighted by the formation of black unions, labor activism, and organized efforts to secure fair wages, safe working conditions, and equity in the workplace. And whereas the ingenuity, resilience, and entrepreneurship of African-Americans have fostered economic self-help strategies and strengthened black communities despite historical and ongoing barriers to equal opportunities and resources. And whereas it is crucial to honor and learn from the history of African-Americans and labor, not only to recognize their contributions to this nation's growth, but also to ensure a future of equity, inclusion, and dignity for all workers. Now, therefore, Mayor Karen Howe does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in Sammamish. I urge all residents to join in honoring African-Americans enduring legacy of labor, achievement, and perseverance, and to reflect on the historical and contemporary significance of their contributions to our shared prosperity.
Thank you for your help with this. And now we move to public hearings. Second amended and restated development agreement for Brownstones West. So we're expecting Joseph Shee and Matt Branmire, Peter Brennan, Matt Sandwick, Ashlee, and Kevin, I believe.
Yeah, I didn't mind. Good. First time seeing you in person.
So I'm Joseph C. I'm the Development Review Manager. I've been here seven months now, I think. It's been a really good experience. Really appreciate y'all's time tonight. To my left is Matt, who is also fairly new to the city. He's our deputy director of community development. Did I get that title right? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better? Sounds better. Okay. I don't think I've done karaoke in 20 years, but I can pretend. And Matt is part of our development, community development department, and he will be helping me with some of the slides today while he pulls that up. And then to my right are STCA, the applicants. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Hi there. My name is Peter Brennan, and I am vice president of land development with Innovation Realty Partners.
Matt Sandwick, CEO of Innovation Realty Partners.
And so now we just have to wait for the presentation to get pulled up for a second here. Okay. Good evening, Council. This topic here today, this public hearing, is for the second amended and restated development agreement for Brownstones West. It's a mouthful. Really, what it is centered on is a more holistic approach to Southeast Sixth Street. City staff and the applicant have been hard at work with coming up with solutions of a realignment of Southeast Sixth Street, and this is kind of what we're going to be talking about today. So this first slide that Matt has shown is really what the current development agreement is. And this was approved back in January of 2024, so that will be the first amended development agreement. So if you can kind of see that orange line that's sort of between Southeast Sixth Street and the parks property, that's the delineation mark of the property lines, right? What is private property and what is parks property? So this current development agreement, you know, it really shows Southeast Sixth Street as a separate, its own standalone street, completely separate from essentially the parks property. And if you look at where that Phase Two little block is, so what would happen in this configuration is, you know, Southeast Sixth Street gets put in, gets connected to 224th Avenue Southeast on the right-hand side, so to the east. And then the parks access off of 222nd Place Southeast, the current parks access will get closed off, and then some additional vehicle accesses off of the new Southeast Sixth Street will be provided, allowing access to the park. Next slide. So what we're talking about today, then, the proposed development agreement, it shows essentially one half of a more holistic approach to Southeast Sixth Street. And it's showing one half because this is the applicant's half of the street. So it'll really sort of integrate the parks entrance into sort of its own street. So, you know, the, what it's kind of showing, if you pay attention to that orange line again, is the half of Southeast Sixth Street that the applicant would be providing, it's all on their side of the property. It does not impact the current parks access and the current parks parking drive aisle, right? And then the city, when we are ready, will come in to finish up the other half of Southeast Sixth Street, the southern half of Southeast Sixth Street. And when I say when we're ready, this is a project, the southern half of Southeast Sixth Street, this is a project on our current six-year transportation improvement plan. It is adopted, and there's funding for it. So this is not a pie in the sky, whenever we're ready, we're going to do it. This is, we have budget, and we have, you know, plans to begin sort of examining this work. So the completion of the north side of Southeast Sixth Street, that's by the applicant, that's anticipated by January 1 of 2026, unless the city agrees to push that date back otherwise. So on the next slide, you can kind of see the, you know, a final concept, if you will, of how the holistic street section is looking. So again, with that orange line being the delineating mark, you know, the applicant will put in the north side of Southeast Sixth Street. The city could come in at later date to design and complete the southern half of Southeast Sixth Street. The city has already sent out an RFQ, a request for qualifications, to solicit, you know, consultants to help out with the design of the south side of Southeast Sixth Street. So we're wanting to do the design in 2025 and implement, so construction in 2026, which, you know, kind of falls with the timeline that was on the previous slide. So, you know, why are we doing this? What are the benefits? So here's just a slide of the public benefits. There are some redundancies in impervious surfaces and pollution generating impervious surfaces that would be reduced by this. It's more of a cohesive design instead of a street that standalone with a couple of driveway accesses to the parks, drive aisle, and parking lot. This makes more of a consolidated, you know, approach to how this roadway is going to function. The complexity of the intersections are also reduced because now, instead of somebody having to navigate coming out of the parks via the new accesses onto Southeast Sixth Street with two-way traffic, now it's all going to be part of sort of, you know, a one, one direction, if you will, kind of design. If you're going from east to west, then you're, you can park in the angle parking, come out of the road, onto the sidewalks, and then cross and enter the parks property, and vice versa. If you're going on the south side from west to east, you can do the same. And in general, it just creates sort of more of a better connection in town center in total. And then the last thing is that the, the current parks property does not have any sidewalks on the south side of the parking stalls, and this would provide additional sidewalks, so more non-motorized connections as well. So that pretty much sums up the approach to the Southeast Sixth Street alignment. Staff's recommended next steps is, this is the first of the public hearings, so, you know, keep the public hearing open for the next council meeting, and then we would have a recommended motion at that time. Are there any questions?
How do we manage that so that that parking that's on Southeast Sixth, that's for the Commons Park, so to speak, that the city will put in, is mostly used in that fashion?
Thank you, Councilmember. I can grab that one. And I think the short answer is, it will be public parking. We can sign it to be on the south side, to be associated with the park, but ultimately, it actually creates more parking spaces for the park because people could park on the north side of that road and walk across the street. I think the other piece is, as part of both Brownstones East and West, there will be on-street parking that doesn't currently exist that will be available as well. And so the idea is that you wouldn't have to drive right up to the front of it. You could park in any one of those places and walk into the park.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Thank you for the presentation. And a couple of questions. I'm not clear where that one-way street is. Is it just south of that park in the middle that, like?
Would you mind pointing out which slide it is that you're seeing the one-way street?
This one, yeah. Where's the park here? I mean, where's the sidewalk?
Okay. So the orange line is the Parks property and private property separation. The, if you see all the way on the left-hand side, there's like a little red box, and then it looks like a triangle that's above it. So really, that kind of brownish-gray, that's a sidewalk all around. Is that, if it helps, I can, right, right there does the sidewalk, and it goes.
Oh, the sidewalk is there. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And so this will be a one-way street with the angled parking, right?
In this configuration, yes. But because of the timing of the construction, the city is confident that that one-way nature of it will not last for a significant length of time because the homes aren't built in those areas, right? So there's nothing out there right now, and the, once the Sixth Street improvement is put in, they'll just be sort of wrapping up the first homes on the northwest corner. So there's still a phasing of the homes that are going to be built. But yes, it will be one-way. That half street on the north side will be one-way.
Okay. Okay, it'll be a one-way street. How many affordable units are in this development?
In Brownstone's West?
Yeah.
Or both, west and east?
Just west.
Yeah. Is it 20?
I believe there's, I think there's three in each development.
Okay, thanks. So I'm just comparing the two images, what we have current and the proposed. It looks like the units, and we actually received public comment on this, it looks like the units at the very south end are larger than what they are currently expected to be. Is that true? The unit sizes will be larger?
So the lots are, in this representation, the lots are, that's just the result of the road shifting south, and so that's created the lots there on the south side there to be a little bit larger. And what we'll, what we're seeing is that for Brownstone's West, there isn't going to be larger units there. They're, the configuration is going to stay the same from how we originally were looking at the lots, because we're already far enough down in development right now because Brownstone's West is in construction. But then for Brownstone's East, they're just going to be adjusting some of the lot lines because, so that the, so they don't have the one lot being much larger on the end. It'll be more evenly dispersed through the lots.
It will have a bigger side yard, essentially.
It will have a bigger side yard, but we will also be taking the lots and having it more evenly dispersed in east.
Okay.
So those are the lots that are east of the park there.
Okay.
But there are not, there will not be any increase in units.
So there is no increase in unit sizes?
Unit sizes, well, there will, there will be different configurations for the units. They might be a little bit larger.
Okay.
But Brownstone's East is also, has much smaller units than Brownstone's West.
Okay. I'm just trying to get an understanding of how much bigger some of these units are going to be, because on the map, they look substantially larger. Like, if I look at the lower unit on the lower left, it looks almost, you know, a third bigger.
And that's a result of the road shifting. This is, for Brownstone's East, there hasn't been any modification to the lots for, for the plat. So, and the Brownstone's West, they will remain, the lot will have a larger side yard, but the units will not increase.
Okay, I guess I'm, maybe I'm the only one that's confused here. I would actually appreciate, like, to get a good understanding, to get, like, the square footage on the units then, because if we're talking about, like, changing some of these unit sizes, I'd really like to understand if there's a difference between what is currently on the map and what is going to be expected.
Councilmember, in Brownstone's West, where you see the southern unit, southern lot, being a lot larger?
Mm-hmm.
That's just the lot that is increasing, not the home.
Okay.
In Brownstone's East, because it's a little further behind in construction, the increase in square footage will most likely be spread out throughout all the lots, so the smaller units each will become a little bit bigger because they are much smaller to begin with.
That's our understanding as well, and, but, we can evaluate this and provide more information for the next meeting.
Yeah, yes, I would appreciate some more visual information and some numbers. Thank you.
We're happy to do that.
Councilmember Stewart.
My apologies, because I feel like I'm usually better at this, but do you have a picture of, like, here's what's approved now versus what, like, side-by-side? Like, I know they're in here, but it would really help me if they were, like, next to each other. I'm sorry. Just to, because I'm not sure I totally grok, like, I get that we want to sort of not, as a city, have to try to align our dates and stuff because that gets really complicated, and I appreciate that. What I'm trying to understand is, what's changing in the design? And are we only changing it because of the timing, or was there some other? Because I thought we were going to shut off that current entrance, like, that was part of what we had approved before, right, was to kind of shut that down? And there was really good reason for it. So I'm just trying to unravel that and understand.
Sure.
Not that it's bad, I just, I'm not understanding, and I apologize. I have a bit of a headache tonight, so I'm, that's my excuse, and I'm sticking with it, so.
I'll do my best to explain it. So under the current configuration, as you can see, the reason that that access, the Parks access of 222nd is being shut off is because you would have a driveway access and a street very close together. And when that happens, it typically tend to be where accidents occur. So if you think about somebody coming out of the Parks, trying to make a right onto 222nd, they're looking left, they're seeing what traffic is coming, they start driving, and then somebody's coming down Sixth Street, right? So the distance there, or coming out of Sixth Street, right? So, or even turning into Sixth Street. So you want to have spacing between these kinds of driveway intersections, and that's why that was closed off. So I think the...
And what was the plan here? So if we close that off, then that wasn't going to be a parking lot anymore, right? It was just, it was going to be just part of the park? Is that the idea?
I believe it was still going to be a parking lot with accesses coming off of, we see where that Phase One arrow is, so that's one of the entrances, and then...
Is that 224th?
That is Southeast Sixth Street.
Oh, Southeast Sixth, I see, okay. So it's still going to be a parking lot, there was just going to have this little tiny entrance?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so that's what has been approved, right?
Right.
It's a separate Sixth Street, separate parking lot and drive aisle for the Parks.
So, wait, can we go back for a second? So under this, under the current plan, the work for the city is just to help create that new entrance, right? So the amount of work we would have to do as a city is pretty minimal? Well, no, because the orange line is not on the road, see?
Yeah, the road itself is entirely on the applicant's property.
Okay.
Yep.
So the amount of work that, in this plan, the amount of work we, as the city, has to do is, like, just move the entrance, is that correct?
Essentially, close off the 222nd entrance and open up two driveway entrances onto Parks.
But on the new plan, it feels like there's a whole lot more work for us to do. Is that correct?
Councilmember Stewart, you are correct. And part of this is, we are trying to provide a better connection and connectivity throughout, and making, by making this one roadway, we think that it actually opens up the park more and allows it to be more accessible while also creating a better, a better pathway that connects in with the rest of the proposed broader project. And so the rationale and the reasoning behind this is, we can connect that road network in, we can actually create more parking for the park, as well as, as the rest of the town center gets built out, there's the potential to extend that through. If Council will recall, this was part of the conversation we had with the TCIP back in June, where we talked about extending Sixth Street all the way through so that we would create sort of a promenade across the top of the park and connect into the rest of the town center development. So part of what this does...
Yeah, but then we had the budget conversation, Scott.
Well, I understand. But either way, this, this portion can stand by itself and function just fine, at least at the interim, and if not, moving, moving forward in perpetuity if that is the, you know, the will of Council. But this, this design and this layout actually allows us to treat all the stormwater we need to treat, create, so we don't have separate parking lots with a drive aisle right next to it, and to create a roadway where we actually have an entrance to both town center and the park all at once, if you will. So that's the, so to answer your question, though, yes, it is significant. It's a, it's a, it's a step in for the city to partner on this one and to do half of the roadway to connect into it.
Thank you, and that, that makes good sense. I guess, sort of adding on to Deputy Mayor Lamb's list, if we could get the differential in the number of parking stalls, stalls, excuse me, and the differential in the cost between these two, I would, I think that would be really helpful. Thanks.
Councilmember Clark, you had your hand up once. Did you want to, did you have any comments?
I think the answers to the last helped. I was just like, what are the downsides? Because it's like, these are the public benefits. So.
Potential cost, it sounds like.
Councilmember Gupta.
Thank you for the presentation. Scott, I just wanted to follow up on, if Council did in the future choose to extend Southeast Sixth Street, that would just be the southern half, the city-owned portion, and it would be one-way eastbound? Is that correct?
That hasn't been decided yet, Councilmember Gupta. I mean, I think that's a, that's a conversation for, for down the road. It's more about the opportunity to extend that out and have it all be on the same sort of line, if you will, across, across that boundary, recognizing that somewhere in there is the city's notch property, as well as where the applicant's future developments are connecting in on the other side where they have building permits in review, not building permits, but higher-level permits in review for buildings on the other side of the notch. So there would be, there would be a road coming in from the other side at some point in the future.
Would that be, would that potentially include the northern half of Southeast Sixth Street as is depicted here? Would that north part ever connect through, potentially?
It could, yes. It could.
And then, I had asked a question earlier, so I appreciate the response, but would you mind walking us through, in the packet, it mentioned there's a reduction in impervious surface of 10,000 and, 10,000 square feet, and a reduction of pollution generating surfaces of 13,500 square feet. So would you mind walking us through what that reduction is?
Sure, yeah. I actually have a map with boxes drawn around in square footage, so I'm not sure if it would be better for me to follow up. Would that be?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, awesome.
Well, if there are no additional questions, then I will open the public hearing. So I'll even do this part. The public hearing will be open for the period of, until February, remind me someone. 7th?
It's the 4th, Mayor.
Thank you. And I believe I take public comment now, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. Public comment will be open, and we will hold it open through the meeting on February 4th to allow for any interested residents or community members to provide public comment to either tonight or on the 4th, or in writing to Council, as is always the option.
Very good, and I do have Mary Victor, who signed up for public comment. So we'll go in the room first and then to online.
Good evening, Mary Victor, Semamish. I wanted to say that everything I'm going to say, it was from what I read in the packet. So if I use the numbers, they're not made up there from what I wrote down from the packet. So I was really excited to see this. First of all, you know, I've been speaking toward better stormwater since 2014, 2015, and regional stormwater isn't where we take our stormwater and send it off like wastewater to go have it done somewhere else. Regional stormwater means, instead of having here, 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 which looks like some measles, that you would go, we're going to group it all here. So I am so happy and glad that the developer and the city have worked together to get the regional stormwater, because they, it's going to be in the one place, and it's in the packet, it says all the benefits. But if you just take the 10,000 square feet that City Councilmember Gupta asked about, and the 13,500 square feet, that's 23,500 square feet where you'd have it duplicated. It's not duplicated. That's .54, or more than half an acre you're saving. That's why you do it, and you need to do the regional stormwater planning in advance so you can figure out where those things are, because you can't make stormwater run uphill. Stormwater doesn't need very much grade, it needs less than sewer to go downhill, but you need to do that. And you not only need to do that here in town center, but in May of 2017, there were two presentations given, and one didn't get recorded right, but the second one did, and I've passed around the measles thing before, where it says, this is what we could look like, or we could not have the measles, and we could do. So I'm really, really excited to see that, that this is getting underway, and they were able to do it really in the first project, and then they've got both halves. And then I was literally just as excited about the road because when I became a Washington Native Plant Steward, we parked in the community gardens, we were there, and we take our tests there where you have to identify all the plants and see if you learned anything in those 100 hours that you spent in classroom, and then we had to do 150 hours of volunteering. So 250 hours, took me a whole year, we did it COVID years, so we didn't get a lot of help. But anyway, it's a great place, and just from the times I've driven there and walked there, I mean, to be able to have more access, more throughway, a walkway that totally goes through, so if you have a kid or a stroller they can do, and they, you know, they always have their rolling things that they could do, it just seems like a really great idea, and it gives a little bit bigger buffer between the development and that. So it works for the developer, it works for the city, it saves impervious surface. As Councilmember Gupta had said, it's actually pollution generating impervious surface as well, so you're going to have cleaner stormwater. And then I just noticed that also they're doing all the tree requirements for retention that they're supposed to, and I think they're, they've agreed to the eight to one, which is the maximum for replacement, which I almost wonder if you're going to be able to fit that many trees on there. So anyway, I'm fully supportive of it, I think it's really great. I just read from the packet, and thanks for the presentation. Stormwater doesn't need very much grade, it needs less than sewer to go downhill, but you need to do that. And you not only need to do that here in town center, but in May of 2017, there were two presentations given, and one didn't get recorded right, but the second one did, and I've passed around the measles thing before, where it says, this is what we could look like, or we could not have the measles, and we could do. So I'm really, really excited to see that, that this is getting underway, and they were able to do it really in the first project, and then they've got both halves. And then I was literally just as excited about the road, because when I became a Washington native plant steward, we parked in the community gardens, we were there, and we take our tests there, where you have to identify all the plants, and see if you learned anything in those 100 hours that you spent in classroom, and then we had to do 150 hours of volunteering. So 250 hours, took me a whole year, we did it COVID years, we didn't get a lot of help. But anyway, it's a great place, and just from the times I've driven there and walked there, I mean, to be able to have more access, more throughway, a walkway that totally goes through, so if you have a kid or a stroller they can do, and they, you know, they always have their rolling things that they could do, it just seems like a really great idea, and it gives a little bit bigger buffer between the development and that. So it works for the developer, it works for the city, it saves impervious surface. As Councilmember Gupta had said, it's actually pollution generating impervious surface as well, so you're going to have cleaner stormwater. And then I just noticed that also they're doing all the tree requirements for retention that they're supposed to, and I think they're, they've agreed to the eight to one, which is the maximum for replacement, which I almost wonder if you're going to be able to fit that many trees on there. So anyway, I'm fully supportive of it, I think it's really great. I just read from the packet, and thanks for the presentation tonight, and staff's clarification.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else in the room that wanted to sign up for public comment for this particular topic? If not, we'll move to online.
Any pre-registered comments by 5:00 PM today? If you would like to comment, please raise your hand. I see no public commenters, thank you.
Thank you, and I did want to mention that we did get some public comment about this, and I think that there's confusion over what people are expecting, or they're thinking what this is going to be, because there's an idea of what a developer agreement might be versus simply executing a permit. So there's, there may be more public comment, but that will be good, because we will make sure that that gets forwarded to you, so you have an opportunity to respond. So thank you for your time. Mayor? Yep? Did you have something? Sorry.
I did, I'm sorry. When we get those costs, can we also get the cost savings? So if we're going to reduce impervious surface, or reduce stormwater facilities that we have to maintain long-term, I think that's also part of that equation, that we want to look at. There's sort of short-term and long-term costs, because we know that our operation, long-term operational costs are important, so we want to make sure we have that complete picture. Sorry to pile on to the requests, but we just want to make sure we're really looking at all that, all that data. Thank you.
And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Now we're going to move on to unfinished business, which is approval proclamation, rescinding, emergency recommendation motion, and so I believe Mike Sugg will be leading us through this.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Mike Sugg, supervising management analyst in the city manager's office. We have a quick one here for you tonight. As you all recall, in late November, the city experienced a major weather event, commonly referred to as a bomb cyclone, which caused widespread damage throughout our city. Given these impacts, the city manager issued a proclamation of civil emergency on November 22nd, which council subsequently ratified at their next regular meeting on January 7th of this year. While the city is still dealing with the damage that was caused by the storm, our operations have returned to a state where the emergency powers are no longer necessary. Therefore, on January 14th, the city manager signed a proclamation terminating the civil emergency, a copy of which is included in your packet tonight. Similar to the process for initiating the emergency, termination also requires subsequent approval by the council as a procedural step. So tonight, staff is recommending that council approve the city manager's January 14th proclamation terminating the civil emergency. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions about this? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the city manager's termination of the proclamation of civil emergency dated 14th January 2025.
Second? Thank you, it's been first and second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 And thank you very much, motion carries. So now on to new business. So we have David Pyle and Jackie Bilal, who will take us through a workshop of critical areas regulations and corporation reference into the shoreline master program. Thank you, take it away, David.
Great, good evening, Mayor, council. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, if I can find the right thing to share. There we go. Photos of all my children. Let's see. That's next week's program. So we are here this evening to talk about the next step in updating our codes as part of the comprehensive plan, critical areas update cycle that we just went through, and how that will integrate into the city's shoreline master program. The purpose here this evening, or the purpose of the project, I should say, is to complete a fairly simple administrative update to the city's shoreline master program. I think it's really important to point out that there are inherent differences and purposes between the Growth Management Act, which is what requires critical areas rules, and the Shoreline Management Act, which is what requires a shoreline master program. I think it's also important to immediately highlight that, under the 1972 Shoreline Management Act, a city is required to develop and implement a shoreline master program, which basically affects the shorelines of the city, which would be like Simamish, Beaver Lake, and Pine Lake, and it extends 200 feet inlandward of the ordinary high watermark, or the edge of the lake, if you will. It is limited to that area. The balance of the city is not under restriction or requirements of a shoreline master program. Another thing that is really important is, is that although the city is required to develop and implement a shoreline master program under the Shoreline Management Act, a city doesn't actually own the shoreline master program. We basically develop it, we send it off to the State Department of Ecology, who reviews it, and ultimately approves it, in addition to you all approving it by way of ordinance, and then they file it away, and they own it, and they hold it. And if we ever want to amend it, we have to file a request for amendment to the shoreline master program with the state, who will then review it, and alongside you all, with your approval, will then also approve it. And if they approve it, and you approve it, they will then file it again, and that will be the most up-to-date version of our shoreline master program that we are then obligated to implement, basically on their behalf. So we have some local control here, but at the end of the day, we're not the final decision-maker with regard to whether or not changes to our shoreline master program are approved. I just wanted to highlight that difference, whereas, under the Growth Management Act, with critical areas rules, for example, we are the final decision-maker. We do take into account commentary provided by different agencies, and tribes, and members of the community as part of our critical areas update, and we did do that, but we are not, we are ultimately the final decision-maker, you all are, in terms of adopting an ordinance and implementing critical areas rules. So we're kicking this off this evening, and we're hoping to wrap it up in the end of, I guess, the beginning of the spring. We, over the next few months, will be working with the State Department of Ecology to do what I'll call a pre-review. By, what I mean by that is, we're going to be sending off our proposed changes and integration into the shoreline master program. The code language and the background to Ecology, they'll review it in advance of you all taking action, and ideally give us a head nod about whether they think it will pass the ecology test, so to speak. Then we'll bring it back to you all, where you'll be asked to finally integrate it, but through ordinance into our shoreline master program. Then once that ordinance is passed, we'll formally transmit it to the State Department of Ecology, who ultimately will then provide a letter to us telling us that our SMP, our shoreline master program, has been officially updated. There's a lot going on there, so if you have any questions, really the way to think of this is, is it's mostly a bookkeeping exercise. Just a little bit more background, as you're all aware, in '23 and '24, we went through update of our critical areas ordinances. Under state law, we are now required to integrate them into our shoreline master program. There was a House bill that was referenced in the agenda packet that Mary Victor indicated had an incorrect link, we apologize for that. We also transpose the numbers, so I want to highlight that the bill, I'll tell you what that bill was when I'm done with the presentation, or I actually have the bill up from the legislature. I want to highlight that some of the other nuances related to shoreline management don't allow the same process that we use in critical areas. So in critical areas, we need to have a legal relief valve, if you will, for when our critical areas rules result in a property being encumbered to a point where it is not developable. We have what we call reasonable use exception in our code. And what that does is it provides an off-ramp, a relief valve, if you will, to afford a property owner through mitigation and offsets the ability to develop an encumbered piece of property. We do not have that process under the Shoreline Management Act, and we do not process reasonable use permit applications in the shoreline. Instead, they use shoreline variances. So when you read through this, you'll note, this is essentially the string of code that we are proposing to update, and when you read it, you note that we're integrating our critical areas rules in their entirety, except for the exemptions, exceptions, isolated wetlands, and pilot program. Well, the good news is, starting from the bottom, the pilot program was repealed, it's no longer in the code, we don't have to worry about it, we can strike that out. Isolated wetlands really only pertain to areas that are upland, they're not in the shoreline. Shorelines don't regulate wetlands that are not hydrologically connected to waters of the state. So we don't have to worry about that one either, we have language that excludes isolated wetlands. Exceptions, and this gets into the nuance between the Shoreline Management Act and the Growth Management Act, and the process that's used. So while these exemptions are not offered in shorelines, there is an alternative path in shorelines that is a procedure where we use the shoreline variance process. So this would be the revised code, which would be fairly similar, we simply have updated the code references, and we have struck out the pilot program component, and this is what we would be transmitting to Ecology, in addition to the volume of the record of our critical areas update, which clearly demonstrates, from our perspective, that we have met the best available science requirement for critical areas, and demonstrates that, if applied in the shoreline, we would achieve no net loss of ecological function. So as far as next steps go, again, Ecology review in February, and then we'll be back on March 18th, where the council, if we get the nod from Ecology, will be asked to hold a public hearing and formally pass ordinance integrating the critical areas, updated critical areas rules into the shoreline master program, at which point we will then transmit it to Ecology for their final blessing. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have questions? If not, we can release David Pyle to his kittens.
Or kids.
Or kids. Or both. Okay, thank you very much, David, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we are now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick items. We had a great MLK, MLK Day of Service yesterday. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Lamb for coming out with the teams and joining them. There's a, I have a great photo here showing her in full work garb, which is amazing. We had a really good turnout, I want to thank the team that put it together, we had 79 volunteers, accounting for a total of just under 200 hours. So that was great. They covered an area of approximately 1,500 square feet, and removed five yards of invasive plantings, put down 30 yards of mulch. So, great job to everyone that came out and participated in that, so I want to thank everyone for that. I also want to just let the community know, we continue to hear some concerns about the work that Zipley is doing out in the neighborhoods, and we are actively, including as of late this afternoon, talking with Zipley about how to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and cleaning up after themselves. That continues to be an ongoing process, and we are continuing to hold them accountable for what they're doing. So with that, Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. How about councilmember reports? Surely there's something. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, we had our first GMPB, which is the Growth Management Policy Board meeting, and we approved our first comprehensive plan. So the GMPB actually will review and approve all of the comprehensive plans. So that was really exciting to kind of get that kicked off, and very, very informative. So that's it, that's the exciting, I know, nerdy. Rashin, do you want to mention the YMCA breakfast at all?
Is that okay, may I do that?
Why don't you do that?
Just as a public notice, to the public, in our Simamish community YMCA, on February 11th, we are having annual kickoff of fundraiser, so it's our annual breakfast, 7 to 9. Please sign up and come to the breakfast, you can get a tour of our fabulous building, and hear about the work that the Y carry out, and how they support our community here in Simamish and the surrounding area.
Councilmember Gupta.
I was selected to be an alternate for the King Conservation District Advisory Committee, so I will be bringing quarterly reports back to council, and I just wanted to thank our fourth-grade Cub Scouts, who came an hour early, had a lot of fun at the dais, made some very, made some very interesting motions, including banning homework, free ice cream, and, and, increasing property tax for more money for our parks, which got a motion and a second, so, little bit of A and little bit of B. But that was all our fun, thank you to our community for coming and learning about our local government.
Mr. City Manager?
I apologize, Mayor, I forgot one item, since we don't have a meeting next week. Lunar New Year is Saturday, February 1st, want to invite the community to come join us at the Central Washington Building, starting at 1:00 in the afternoon on Saturday the 1st. So please come join us.
Deputy Mayor Lamb and I will be there at 1:00. So if there's no other business before council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I don't, I think you said a basketball game, I'm not sure.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.